Good morning, everyone. Welcome to Norwich City Council Licensing Subcommittee. It is the sixteenth of October 2023. Today, we've got an application for variation of a licence at 152A Unthang Road, formerly known as Oliver's. And first of all, we'll start with Maxine, who will introduce the report. But first of all, I need to do apologies.
No, received.
Okay, thank you. And declarations of interest?
I'm on the camera.
Okay. Also, I received a phone call from applicant, perhaps Mr. White, a couple of months ago, where you described the outline of what you propose to achieve at the premises. And it was just the one phone call and no details were discussed apart from that. So from my point of view, it doesn't predetermine me in any way. Okay, it is also my word and that's why I received a phone call. Okay, so Maxine, please.
Members are asked in accordance with the delegation of the licensing functions contained in the Norwich City Council Statement of Licensing Policy, Licensing Act 2003, to consider the application to vary the premises licence at Oliver's 152A Unthang Road, Norwich NR22RS, following receipt of a relevant representation. It is recommended that members determine the application to vary the premises licence in accordance with the Licensing Act 2003 and subsequent regulations. Guidance issued under section 182 of the Licensing Act 2003 or Norwich City Council Statement of Licensing Policy. The applicant is Fat Cat Brewery Tap Limited, not as stated in the agenda of Mark White. That was a error there. The application seeks to vary the current premises licence to increase the customer occupancy from 30 to 60, extend the supply of alcohol to include off sales, reduce the number of required staff required during opening hours from three to one, increase permitted opening hours on New Year's Day to 2am, and increase times for both late night refreshment and supply of alcohol until 1.30am. Again, this is on New Year's Day. These variations are set out in the application form, which is attached to Appendix A. This also includes the steps proposed to promote the licensing objectives, which is given right in the schedule. We receive no representation from the responsible authorities. Received two representations from two local residents. Copies of these are attached to Appendix B. And also should be attached in our Appendix C, a copy of the current premises licence. In determining the application, we review promoting the licensing objectives, the Subcommittee must give appropriate weight to the steps that are appropriate to promote the licensing objectives, such as prevention of crime in children's public safety, the prevention of public nuisance and the protection of children from harm. The representations include in supporting information presented by all the parties, the guidance issued under section 182 of the Licensing Act 2003, national guidance, and the council's own Statement of Licensing Policy. The Subcommittee must take such at the following steps as it considers appropriate for the promotion of the licensing objectives. Grant the application as asked. Modify the conditions of the licence by altering or omitting or adding to them. Reject the whole or part of the application. There is an error in the agenda there where it says refuse to accept the proposed DPS. That is an error and that should be ignored. The Subcommittee is asked to note that it may not modify the conditions or reject the whole or part of the application merely because it considers it desirable to do so. It must actually be appropriate in order to promote the licensing objectives. The representation received appears to relate to all issues that fall under the licensing objectives. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Maxine. So can you just describe the additional papers that we've received, please?
Additional papers were... It was from the solicitors and it was a fire risk assessment conclusions. And there was a noise impact assessment and a noise management plan. They've all been served on yourselves and also the objectors.
Okay, thank you. We also received a late objection and that was from Mr. DiMarco. So one of the two we received. So I'll just confirm and commit it that we've read those additional papers. Thank you.
Chair, just a technical point. I understand the representation wasn't late. It was merely not received at the licensing team until recently. So there's no suggestion it was received outside of the statutory period.
Thank you for that clarification. Yes, what I meant was we received it relatively recently.
Yeah, it was sent to the town.
Yeah, okay, we've had plenty of time to read that. Okay, and we'll hear from the objector as well. Okay, so for the benefit of anyone that's watching on YouTube, my name's Ian Stuteley. I'm the chair today. The panel consists of myself, councillor Keith Driver and councillor Liam Calvert. Okay, so I'll turn to the applicant now. And that's Sister Tim Carey. And if you'd like to present your case piece.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everybody. My name's Tim Carey from Leeds Prior here for Mr. White, who is MD for Fat Cat Brewery. The position is as follows. These premises are already licensed. They were licensed by this committee in 2021 under the name of Oliver's. This variation application is tweaking the conditions that were granted on that occasion and seeking to extend the licensable activities to permit off sales in addition to on sales. To look at the original licence, the original licence as granted in 2021 had a raft of conditions in Annex One and Annex Two. Annex One are the mandatory conditions, which run from one to nine. Annex Two are the conditions that are said to be consistent with the operating schedule and they run to one to 28. And one may feel for the nature of the premises that were proposed to be operated, those conditions are fairly lengthy and indeed one might go as far as to say fairly unusual. But they are the conditions and I think it's to the credit of the applicant that he does not seek to amend any of those conditions with the exception of the two conditions. And it's only two conditions he seeks to change and they are, if I don't forget, it's condition fourteen. Condition fourteen is the one that limits customer occupant capacity to 30. He seeks an increase in that to 60. And the other condition he seeks to tweak is condition twenty-five. Condition twenty-five is the condition that requires the presence of three staff members during opening hours. Rather oddly, that condition was apparently imposed for the protection of children from harm. Something I struggle to understand why that was imposed, but there we are.
Okay, I'll just interrupt you there. It wasn't imposed by the committee. It was offered by the applicant on the day. And so as a committee, we have to accept what's offered by the applicant on the day and write that into the operating schedule.
That might explain why the pub wasn't a commercial success. We understand it traded up until, I think, February of this year when it shut down. And I suspect, although I do not know, that part of the reason it closed was because of those two conditions, which the applicant considers would make the running of a public house in that locality to be uneconomic and frankly, not viable. So therefore, effectively, it's an application to increase the verbitage numbers to 60 and it's an application to reduce the required members of staff from down from three to one. Oddly, and I say oddly, the previous operators didn't get planning permission. They should have done, but they didn't. And as a result, Mr. White has formally applied for planning permission. I understand that application is due to be considered by the planning committee on the ninth of next month. You will note from the list of responsible authorities that planning have not objected to this licensing application. And Mr. White has been given to understand that the officers are recommending approval. In relation to planning, there are noise, there's a noise report. There's an acoustic report.
I'm just sorry to interrupt you again. I think we'll just, we'll stick to the licensing matters and not talk about planning. And actually, the planning committee is separate. I'm also on that committee, so I'll get to see this application again. But yes, yes, indeed. So yeah, so we'll stick to the licensing matters. In relation to planning, whether or not there's approval has been given by officers, it still will be subject to a committee.
Separate issues, I appreciate it. So you'll notice that environmental health, who are a responsible authority and have overall input on matters of public nuisance, which includes noise, have had no observations on this application. There's certainly no suggestion that any complaints were made in relation to operation by the previous operators. Mr. White has gone to considerable time and expense to employ acoustic engineers and noise consultants to assist him make the premises more noise proof than they were previously. You will note from the report which you have that various suggestions have been made by the acoustic consultants as the steps that ought to be taken to minimise the risk of escaping noise. And those are matters which Mr. White takes on board and will implement. Perhaps most significantly of all, those recommendations were put forward after the acoustic consultants had carried out noise assessments in the vicinity of the premises. And you will note from the substantive technical report, I think it's 6.2.3, that their view was that the noise emanating from the premises would in most cases be superseded by the ambient noise. And when we are talking about premises that are on Unthang Road, that are biobust stop, that they are directly opposite the car with all the noise that store will generate, particularly with deliveries. There are a number of other pubs in the area, all of which apparently have outdoor drinking facilities. And the existing conditions set out in Annex Two, I think it's condition twenty-two, require the imposition of a noise limiter. So you are dealing with an applicant who is noise aware and is taking more steps than the previous occupants took to minimise the risk of a noise nuisance being created. It's significant that you have no formal objection from public protection. You'll be aware that under the statutory guidance, they are to be regarded as effectively experts. And you will place no doubt significant weight on the fact that they do not object and they do not suggest that this will be a nuisance or will create difficulties for those who live in the vicinity. It's equally as interesting that any objections that have come in, and there have been two, were lodged in relation to planning, not licensing. I appreciate they have drifted across, as indeed is not a criticism because the system allows that to happen. But there were no formal objections from anyone in relation to this licensing application. It is even more interesting that there are no objections from the premises adjacent to and adjoining 152A. There's nothing from 152 Unthang Road. There's nothing from One Ollongley Street. Indeed, there's nothing from anyone in the immediate vicinity with the exception of the current objector who's here today, who lives across the road up Dover Street. The applicant is not trying to turn the area into a latter-day Prince of Wales road. They specialise in the retail of craft beer. That is the kind of clientele they anticipate attracting. It is not suggested that they are going to increase any music that apparently is played, that that will be background music and will be something to a limiter. They're seeking only to have 60 customers whilst it's an increase on the existing 30. It's not going to be that big an increase as regards the whole capacity of the premises. That capacity will not cause any problems with fire. Fire not said anything. Indeed, I understand Taz Valley have been in consultation with fire and they've prepared a detailed report, which you have the benefit of setting out the steps the applicant will take to deal with any fire precautions that are made. If I go through it, they are set out there, as indeed are the steps that the applicant will take in relation to noise, which again are set out in the noise management report. They're all there, they're all set out, showing you, I think, that you have a responsible operator. The other thing is obviously the members of staff. Mr. White, an experienced operator, he says the premises do not need a condition whereby three members of staff have to be there every single day when the premises are open. There may be occasions when small staff are needed. And he would ask that that condition be reduced to one. As you commented, chairman, for some reason that was offered by the applicant. I fail to understand why, but there it is. So we ask that this application be granted. It's a modest tweaking of what you already have. It's a modest tweaking of what was already operating there, albeit not financially successful. It fits in with the area. That's, I think, is something which was presumably resolved at the last hearing. And for those reasons, we ask that the variation be sought, be granted in terms of sort. The off-licence is, is, the condition is required simply because on occasions there will be customers who will ask to take a particular beer home with them from the bar. And Mr. White wishes to be in a position to enable them to do that if they have something they particularly like. That's an overview. As I said, I commend the experts' reports to you. I commend what the responsible authorities have said. Any additional questions? Both myself and Mr. White will hopefully be able to deal with it.
Okay, thank you very much. So we've, the two objectors did, applied or submitted their objections through the planning email address. But it's common for members of the public to mix licensing and planning. So we're perfectly happy to accept those as legitimate objections to the licence. And I think both of them actually mentioned the licence within their objections. So that's, that's fine. Also, both of those objections relate to noise that may be produced outside of the premises rather than inside. So we should, in this committee, concentrate on addressing that particular issue in particular. So first of all, are there any questions for the applicant from members?
None at this time.
Yeah, shall we hear from, would you like to ask a question? Shall we hear from the objector now? So Mr. DiMarco, please.
Well, the question of ambient noise, when I read the acoustic report, I was some time ago, it's obviously that before evening rush hour, there's a fair amount of noise because of traffic, because of cars and so on and so forth. No, I don't think any of the objectors are bothered about that. You're buying property, your home on the Unthang Road, you know there's going to be traffic. It's after us, because after eight, nine o'clock, it's very quiet. Will that be the case with, if he obtains, he wants to increase it from 30 to 60 people? They want to be able to sell their takeaway. Now, he said they'd take it home, but they'd be drinking on the pavement. In the summer months, there's only one door, it gets hot. They're going to open the door and all that noise will come out. And maybe we will have to shutter windows, meaning the residence. It was pointed out that there was no complaints that the property is adjacent to Oliver's. Well, it's probably because the tenants and the landlords, well, they don't live there. So they're not as bothered as somebody who actually lives there, like myself or other people. For the staff, I see the conditions, the two conditions were mentioned. One is to keep the numbers at 30, to increase it to 60 as asked. And the other one is to have three members of staff. I really liked these conditions to be kept because if there's misbehaviour or behaviour that having only one person as staff is going to encourage that. Having three members of staff increases the sense of security. Increasing from 30 to 60, well, I don't see why. My fundamental view is that place is too small for a pub. And they want to increase it. And it's not part of the noise, but they might want to increase by buying adjacent properties. I don't think Fat Brewery Tap is really interested in the premises as it is. It's just a start-up stepping stone. This is what I'm concerned. That's why I would like to keep it to 30.
Can you expand on that suggestion that it's a stepping stone?
Because... Chair, the difficulty is it's not part of the variation in front of you. Whether correct or not, all you've got is the variation to look at.
Yes, I mean, we're looking at the increase from 30 to 60 and the staffing. And we'll have a couple of questions about that in a moment. Your objection centred around, and there was a number of things in it, but really it's the noise that will be generated from the outside. I think as you've described it.
Beer takeaway, people could be looking at it.
Did you have that in your original?
No, I didn't, I didn't think they had asked for that.
Yeah, we need to...
I didn't realise they asked for it.
Okay, well, the committee will note that that's an additional objection, but we need to stick to the objection that you sent in at the beginning. So it's really about the noise that will come from within the pub when the doors are perhaps open in the summer and also from the outside area, which is right on Unthang Road, opposite your house.
The bus stop, people are coming.
Yeah, okay, okay, so that's noted.
Especially for the last 60 instead of 30. That's potentially 60 people on the pavement at closing times instead of 30.
The applicant suggested that that was a minor tweak and doubling the number is actually probably not a minor tweak. It is actually quite a significant increase in the numbers that would be there.
Looking at it as regards in the whole, the 22 conditions.
Okay, thank you. So any questions for either the objector or applicant? If not, I'll go first.
I'll hold on.
Councillor Driver.
Tommy, I guarantee you wouldn't just have one staff there. If you've got 60 people in there and I walked in there, you wouldn't serve me within 25 minutes. So I would go somewhere else. So I guarantee you're going to have more staff in there at certain times. Could you elaborate on that, that when you will have more staff in? Do you know yet or not?
So having run a pub for the last thirteen and a half years, the, for us to have three members of staff on at any given time that we're open and we would, in order to make it economically viable, want to be open at 12 noon daily, we know that you're not going to get up to 60 people in on a Monday at 12. So the intention there is just to have one member of staff on. And as the day increases, as we do in our other pubs, then we would increase the number of staff throughout the day and throughout the days of the week as well. So they were more on potentially busier nights. So, and also for security of our own staff in the evening times, it would be very unlikely that we would only want one member of staff on in the evening times. But I think the reason we need to wish it down to one member of staff is so that when we open the establishment on any given day, we would be allowed to do that with just one member of staff. And one member of staff would be sufficient enough. We believe if we look at our other venues, probably up to about half past three, four o'clock in the afternoon, and then you increase staff depending on the day, time, the season and the like. Now, also, I think it's important to say that the staff that we have in any, on any given time are fully trained. They know what they're talking about and they, we also like to give on the staff sort of conflict resolution, training. They know everything about the beer that we're serving, they know everything about the venue and they know how to manage people. Because otherwise, the last thing we want is to have an incident because it doesn't make us look good, it doesn't make our business look very good. So yeah, that's why we would only want one member of staff on or we would like to be able to put just one member of staff on, especially when we're just open.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Calvert, please.
The outside area is, outside area is relatively small.
Yes.
But it has the potential to generate a lot of noise with customers. Could you tell us more about how you might manage that space particularly?
So what we've, what we've gone for and the design that we've gone for on there is to put a low big fence up around which would shade the area. So the last thing we want is to, yeah, a low big fence and a gate at the start or at the foot of the ramp going up to the front door. Now, and within that area, we would like to put seating and also cooling. Now, and within that area, we would like to put seating and also a cooling unit. Now, what we've done is we've worked incredibly hard with a company called Beeline Refrigeration, who have been going for tens of years, and they do all of our air conditioning systems and they, they're very good at making bespoke air conditioning systems because obviously we're going to need to keep the cellar cool. Now, in order to, we worked with Adrian James Acoustics on this too, the last thing we want to do is annoy our neighbours if, and having, and having a, having dealt with and managed a pub for the last thirteen and a half years, it's, it's the one thing you don't want to do, don't upset your neighbours. So we're working with Beeline in order to make a bespoke unit which shuts off at eleven PM dead, so that the noise of the air conditioning system outside is, there is, is not there because it's turned off at eleven PM daily. It will then come back on at seven AM daily in order to get the cooler down to temperature again, ready for service at twelve. The reason for the picket fence is not only for security, but also when, and as we do in our other, in our other venues, let's say for example, we were able to serve until eleven PM, we would then bring those customers inside or ask them to disperse, giving you twenty minute warning, twenty to eleven, you must have drunk, you must have drunk a little bit, sorry. And, and be gone by eleven PM from this space and/or bring your drinks inside in order to finish up. Now, the reason for the picket fence is so that we can shut that area off over an evening so that as soon as it gets to eleven o'clock, there's no one outside. We've managed this perfectly well at the brewery tap, like I say, for a long time. Actually, at the brewery tap, it's incredibly hard, we've got a massive garden outside in front there and we have to have every customer in by half past ten. And we've worked with Richard Dyde at the, the Environmental Protection over a number of years, especially for our Covid, in order to make sure that, you know, in all of our staff, the one thing we have to do is protect that licence. If we do not protect our own licence, especially when it comes to noise pavement, then actually we're shooting ourselves in the foot. This is our licence, we have to protect it, we have to protect our neighbours because if we get too many complaints, then that's our livelihood gone. And the way we look at it is that not only is it the livelihood of the people that we employ, you know, we've got to pay a mortgage, people that we employ got to pay rent, mortgages, look after children and the like. So it's very important for us to look after that licence. How else we would manage it is that when, on, on any given day, especially during the summertime, we like to employ an extra person just to, well, we do at the brewery tap and we hope to employ all the methods that we do at the brewery tap at Oliver's, is to make sure that there's always somebody floating around, especially during busy times, in order to make sure and curb any noise that we can control. And that is done by, like I say, training and making sure that, you see in so many pubs, that one person's too noisy. We make it our point in our pubs to make sure that that person is had a word with or up and down and ejected as quickly as possible if they don't keep down or behave. We, we demand respect in our places.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Driver, please.
Yeah, I was just wondering about the outside spaces, you wrote chairs and chairs up there for people to sit at. Do you look like this is everyone's got to come in, how do you check this on these sixty people, is it big enough to have sixty people? Because if people have thirty outside and you only got thirty inside now, then suddenly you have sixty. How are you going to manage you, we've got sixty, thirty, sixty-four?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. If we ever leave that there's overcrowding in place, it's, it's a count of numbers and then we eject.
Okay.
It's as simple as that. Also, outside areas in any given pub, you'll see lots of storm shelters or, or, you know, they're like bus shelters, aren't they? People have built all sorts of things in order to sit under. We won't be able to do that at Oliver's. We are subject to, maybe morning with planning, but we are subject to the weather. If the weather's bad, no one's going to sit outside and therefore, and if there's no room inside, then they'll have to go. And it's the same with the pub that we're currently at, if everybody comes in.
So you're saying you could actually be served all of the sixty in?
No, to be honest with you, the space in itself would be uncomfortable to, to have sixty. The reason that sixty is on the application is because that's the maximum amount of people that we could have in the place.
So if you went sixty in there, could you still have people sitting outside at the beginning?
As my understanding is that the premises licence involves the entirety of the premises, the outside areas included, that includes the sixty, I believe. Mind you, that's my assumption. Mind you, the fire risk assessment states that we could have sixty people inside based on the fact that we would flip the door and the door is, is nearly a metre wide. So it opens outwards, it's got a push bar on it and it opens out, outwards so that, you know, the flow of traffic, should there be an emergency, is fluid.
Okay, thank you. Is that all to your question? Okay, Councillor Cowback, did you have any?
Sorry, yeah, I did have one just a second. Could you expand on how people might be arranged inside, so what proportion of people do you expect to have seated, which proportion of people do you expect to have stood?
Yeah, in fact, this, it should be, everybody should have a, a plan at the back of. Back of the noise. Yeah, there we go. So the idea is to, the, the one thing we want to do is, is have an overcrowded situation.
Can you get my idea in the fire assessment?
But we would assume, so the idea is to move the public staff away walls in order to create as much open space in there as possible. There's, there's, there's walls in there that don't need to be there for us because we are essentially, the idea behind the entire operation is to create a micro brewery tap in, in place of where Oliver's was. Now, we know that there's going to be a huge amount of things we can't do at brewery tap. For example, we can't have live music, they may be able to, we may be able to have some, surround, you know, some sound out, some speakers in order to create a little bit of background music, noise. But there's a lot of things we can't do and we understand that fully going in before we put the applications or the licence into. The proportion of seating is the, in the downstairs, we would like to create a, create a nice copy almost of the bar that we've got in the brewery tap with chalkboards above and we would have probably six stools around that bar, leaving a big empty space in the middle so that people can get served. And just actually going back to the point of staff members, our aim is to always serve people under a minute or at least acknowledge them at busy times in a minute or less. So therefore we would always put on enough staff members to handle the, and above the amount of people in the, in the building. We would take out the, there are some boxed units by the front window there, we would take those out and put two stools, each seating about four people per, per, per table in the front window there. We would create bench seating along the right hand side and putting three tables there. And then as you go up the steps towards the loo, there's a snug area, we believe that we'll have about six people sat there. And then another booth area to the left hand side of the back of the building where we would bench it out, again, using similar things that we've done before, church pews, chopping change in order to put around with small tables. And we believe that we would probably have another three to four tables up there. I would suggest to you that the maximum amount of seating in place that we would have would be between about thirty-five or forty, leaving enough room in the middle in order to adhere to the fire risk assessment. So the idea is where the bar is, as you walk in on the left, the middle of the, of, let's call it Oliver's, or the bar is purely left for those that would stand and also enough access and enough room so that if there was an emergency, people could get out and there wouldn't be tables in the way. In terms of the front, we would put in minimum bench seating. Now, remember we've, you know, the idea is to put a cycle block thing there for any member of staff used to cycle and we've got a cooling unit going in there as well, but we would have bench seating along the inside of the picket fence with a few stools and tables that would perhaps be brought in for an evening. So yeah, I, I think maximum, we would have thirty-five, six to forty comfortably without, you know, make people squashed. Yeah, thank you. That's all right.
Okay, thank you. So outside, how many seats are you going to put outside?
In all honesty, we don't know because there's all, because there's already, but again, we don't want people to feel squashed. There's going to be a cooling unit. I would estimate that the maximum amount of people you're going to get outside is about fifty, twenty tops.
Okay, okay. One thing that's, that's come up, looking at the previous determination for the, for Oliver's in twenty twenty-one.
Chair, I don't know whether the applicant or indeed anyone else save yourself has seen the previous determination. So if you are going to use it as part of this committee, we're probably going to need to have it copied and if that's.
Okay.
I'll go around the table. If you're going to refer to it, does anybody want to see it?
Okay, I'm not necessarily referring.
Oh, okay.
I'm not necessarily referring to it, I'm referring to the conditions that were offered by the applicant.
Which are effectively in front of us today.
Yeah, so.
Lovely.
The licensee will ensure that all customers are seated while consuming alcohol and food and no customer will be permitted to drink whilst standing. So can you address that for us, please?
Which, which number, which condition?
That sounds a bit unfamiliar.
Okay, in that, in that case, it is, it is necessary to share the document that I've got once this is the determination.
I haven't seen that as a condition.
It doesn't appear to, I mean, by all means, it's probably useful, but it doesn't appear to be on the current licence.
Just to say, if that had been something we've read about, that would also be a variation and we'd be looking to change.
Well, that's interesting because it's in the determination that I signed off and it didn't get into the, into the licence conditions.
If you could, we'll need some copies.
Yeah, okay, so we'll have to adjourn the meeting for a few minutes while we get the copies of those. And then.
Well, variations, the variation. The premises licence, subject to confirmation from the licensing team, is as on the papers. So that's it, those matters are fixed and can't be amended.
So, I mean, we have the licence as it stands and the licence as it stands, there's no restriction on the service of alcohol or whatever is going to stand in.
Chair, the advice legally, from me at least, is going to be putting the notes of determination aside because you'll have to, the document to rely on is the premises licence.
Yeah, so that's, that's an error of, an error of the authority.
It does sound like it at this time, yes.
Yeah.
I don't think we, well, let's at least have the paper to look at, but after that, no, I probably don't believe so.
Given, given the advice that you're giving, I think perhaps for the purpose of this committee, I should withdraw the, the, the comment because even if we all see the papers, the legal standing is the same. Exactly, so I will, I will withdraw that and mark it down as a, as an error of the authority. So we don't need to stop the stream or continue. Yeah, okay.
So just to be clear, they'll be allowed to stand and drink outside?
Well, I was, I was referencing on the premises entirely, so, so ultimately, yes, because it's not, not a condition that, that's in the licence. This was, this was inside and outside, yeah, which is.
Sorry, in fact, I'm trying to break into some rules. The cooler, it will be switched off, but is that an obligation?
If I could stop you there, simply because the cooler is not a matter for this committee. It's planning certainly, by all means, flag it a planning.
It is, it is fair to say that planning have wider and greater powers to, to put in restrictions than this committee. Okay, right, so any more questions at the moment? We were talking about the outside.
One.
Yeah.
Yeah, just one more. It's only contact number where members of residents in the area could contact you and say this is really too noisy or busy to go in or there's rare blood outside, things told to quieten down or anything. And how will the residents know?
Yeah, absolutely. So we intend to have a landline which would be put in behind the bar and therefore, and our numbers will be widely available on any websites and or, yeah, on, on any website.
Would you have a, an instant book to record if a resident pulled up?
Yes, I think that's part of, that's part of.
That's part of.
Yeah, that's part of. And then the noise management plan, at the moment, we don't have the specific number for, for the building, but we put my number in there, my email address, my, all of my contact details. And like I say, we take all, all noise complaints seriously and we, we want to work with our community in order to make it a viable business and also a nice, nice place to be for the community. We want to, we want our neighbours to use us. We do that very well where we are positioned at the moment. Everybody around us knows that we've built quite a community with our immediate neighbours. We have a talk, we have a chat once in a while and they're very good at highlighting anything that they're not happy with and therefore we try to work with everybody around us at all times.
Chair and other councillors, just to say, it's too vague and half it would be irrelevant to say, we'll just insert the noise management plan. So at some point during this committee, I'll be asking the applicant to directly specify offered conditions, if any, that are arising from the noise management plan as relating to this variation.
Yes, and I think we'll start that process quite soon. I think the discussion is perhaps drawing to a close. Mr DiMarco, apologies. Have you, has anything that you've heard given you any reassurance about the management of the premises?
No, I.
Do you have any, any questions or suggestions that you'd like to put forward to?
Other than those conditions that were mentioned, keeping numbers down to thirty, I appreciate the members of staff at twelve o'clock with only four people, but in the evenings, yes, because that's when any problem happens, I expect in the evening, not during the, the afternoons. Yeah, those two conditions. The cooler is not part of the, that would like that to be clear, that it will be shut off at night because it is noise. And but basically I'm just against the place being there because I think that premise is just not suited to the environment.
Okay, when it was operating as Oliver's, did you have any cause to complain about the noise?
There was very few people. Well, they, they followed it up because they didn't have enough business.
It is fair to say that it was commonly underused.
Underused, yeah, and a wine bar doesn't attract maybe the same sort of people as a pub. I know that from the Warring Arms, not now, but previously, they were going to have live music and it was attracting quite a rowdy bunch, yeah.
Okay, well, we, we hear that there's no application for, for live music from this venue. I think, before we go on to the details, I think I'd just like to address the, the noise that will be generated from the, from the front and also through windows and the door, especially in the summer. But if you've got sixty people in there or near, close to sixty, you may have windows open at any time of the year. So just how are you going to address that? And sixty people or up to sixty people really can make quite a lot of noise.
So also, if you look at the technical report, the, the noise emanating from people outside, it is effectively canvassed in section six onwards of page nineteen. And what that effectively says is, and fortunately the experts carried out some noise assessment checks, and that the impression from the figures quoted suggests that the noise from those outside or indeed inside the pub will not add in any significant way to the ambient noise that is currently, currently in the area. I think there's a figure that's, sorry, six point two dot three is the relevant result and you will.
And you will note from the plan, or sorry, photo five point two dot one, that obviously this was prepared in relation to the objector's objection, because his house is shown on that plan. You have the noise management plan. Whether you wish us now to go through the specific conditions that could be imposed as a result of the implementation of that plan, you may find that helpful.
We will go through that shortly. I'm looking at the the suggestion. There's a suggestion here to have a one metre, one point eight metre high fence. Is that something that you're proposing?
That's going to be offered as a condition, sir.
Okay, so that's in the partition between one five two eight and one five two. What numbers is the noise assessment based on for outside?
The noise assessment, it's six point two dot three. The predicted noise level at Two Onley Street was predicted at fifty seven decibels.
Yeah, forgive me. What numbers of people is it based upon?
That's not mutually apparent from what's said there. It appears to have been an analysis of the division between numbers inside and outside. Meaning predicts what is anticipated from the overall operation of the premises. At Two Onley Street, which is obviously immediately next door, and one five two Unthank Road, which is immediately next door. And you'll note there, so there are the ambient noise figures of sixty, sixty one daytime and fifty eight, fifty nine evening, so five minus six, six point two, four, says it seems ten people.
Okay. Okay, so that's based on ten people. So, and we've just heard from the applicant that there might be fifteen or even twenty outside. Do you wish to do you wish to address that by condition, or do you wish to stick to that estimate?
I think it is, I think we are looking for a certain condition that we restrict the number of people outside, but I think with a figure of ten would be unacceptable and we would end up in a potentially difficult situation. You don't think that twenty people outside would cause a noise nuisance as such. And the interesting thing about this application is that the public protection have not suggested there should be any restriction on the number of people allowed to drink outside. Obviously, the number of people allowed to drink outside will be restricted to the extent of the area, because if you look at the photograph appearing on page twenty one, it's a relatively small area. And I think the applicant is not expecting more than the twenty or so people you mentioned earlier to be outside. But whether this committee minded to impose a condition, then obviously that's something that they would have to be complied with. I think the important thing to notice, sir, is that they have gone to a significant amount of time, trouble and expense to prepare these noise reports.
Yeah, the noise report is based on ten people outside, so either we have a noise report that we that we take into account, because that's going to be the actual numbers of people outside, or ignore the noise report, because it's going to be twice as many. While you consider that, another question I had is about, you've not quite answered that yet, is about the doors and windows opened, and the noise assessment is presumably based on the doors and windows open. Is that correct?
There's not the point to embarrass you by asking you to look for a complex document quickly. If you want any time, please take it and just let us know.
Would you like ten minutes?
I think we'd like ten minutes.
Yeah, we'll just adjourn the meeting for ten, fifteen minutes, just have a quick break, comfort break for anyone that wants it, and we'll come back in fifteen minutes. So at quarter to twelve, please.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, and welcome back to Norwich City Council's Licensing Subcommittee, sixteenth of October twenty twenty three. We've just had a brief, a brief adjournment for some legal advice for the, for the applicant. And so I'd like you to let us know what you've decided, please.
Thank you. Um, position is as follows. We've had the opportunity actually to speak to Gary Percival, who was the noise consultant being prepared for support. The ten people comment in six point two dot four. That's based on the premise that ten people would be speaking all at once. It's Gary's view, that doesn't happen in reality. Hence the reason we're talking about an outside capacity of twenty on the basis ten talkers, ten listeners. So that's how that figure was arrived at. I can see the sense of that. Insofar as the doors open, doors shut, windows open, windows shut point is concerned. Um, that he didn't think, think that was a matter that would trouble this committee on the basis that it wasn't raised and not included in the previous license condition. There are no conditions about windows being shut, windows being open, doors being shut, doors being open. His view is that the doors and windows would only normally be open in the hotter weather when there would be noise outside from, from, from the people on the patio area. So the noise emanating from the pub wouldn't be regarded as an issue or adding to the to the level of noise that people, for example, in the street could hear. But I say it's not a matter which, to be fair to him and to be fair to the committee, it's not a matter he specifically considered. He didn't know it was an issue because it wasn't in the original license. The doors and the windows must be closed, must be opened.
Um, I recall from the meeting that we had in December twenty twenty one that the applicant told us that the windows and door, the windows were, were jammed shut so that they couldn't open the windows. However, subsequently, I've noted that the windows do open because I've seen them open regularly. So, so how do you wish, how do you wish to address that?
The reason the windows are open is that there is a paint shop. So having one in there, it had been stuffy for a number of months. It really didn't smell very nice in there. So the windows do open. Um, I think from a, from a commercial point of view, without being able to open some windows and doors, you're going to find yourself in a position by which you've got a very hot, dank, sweaty room. Um, and I think from a health and safety point of view and the like, it's just not viable. You're going to be able to, you need airflow. You are going to have to service your customers with a bit of air if it is hotter. Now, in our experience, and we cannot govern this, in our experience, that those hotter days, pubs, especially that hill, aren't as busy. They look for beer coffins. If we can only fit fifty people in front of ours, then we're going to be not as busy. But if you create the tinderbox essentially by which you have to have windows and doors shut, no one's going to come in and it's going to be, I don't know, not be viable. So as we do in our pub, we, we like to let airflow, airflow through. Um, you know, it doesn't matter how many bodies you've got in there on a stuffy day, you, you need, you need some air in there. Um, and then we could counter that with an air conditioning system, you might say. But then you're just adding some noise and power consumption, something that, that would have to go on the outside of the building as well. So actually you've got people who's running outside making a noise, which is not very good for our neighbours. Um, and I think Gary's, Gary's personal points were that the, the noise wouldn't, having, having windows and doors open on those particularly hot days wouldn't affect our neighbours substantially at all.
So going, going back to the point I made earlier, the applicant wasn't aware from the previous license that there were any suggestions that the windows should be shut more open, that they may have told you that. So we can only go by what's in the license or what the existing conditions were. We were quite happy with the fact there were no conditions relating to doors and licenses.
Well, um, we, we obviously didn't impose a condition on the windows because we were, we understood that they were, they were jammed shut and they, they couldn't, couldn't physically open. So that, that, that would be the only reason why there was, there was definitely no.
But of course.
But that's not to say that we would have made an imposition anyway. This is just telling you why.
But of course, I mean, the whole, the whole purpose behind the licensing regime is that, to some extent, you trust the licensee. If the licensee gets it wrong, if the licensee creates a public nuisance, a noise nuisance or unlawful difficulties for his neighbours, we'll be back here again and there'll be a review.
Thank you. Yes, that is another difference between planning and licensing.
Also, on that point, if you refer to the noise management plan, our intention is to have something called a sound beer system within the building, which, which would be fully set up by Adrian James Acoustics, which would set itself within the remit of um, as the, the maximum amount of noise that we would be allowed in order to open and run successfully to have inside that building. It's a, it's, it's slightly larger than an A four sheet. It's got a big ear on it and it goes from green to amber to red. And so therefore we will know inside our building, with, with the doors open or not, whether we're making or whether we're going above our noise levels. And so therefore then we're going to make a, make an adjustment. We turn the music straight off and therefore, and if that doesn't work, we eject people. Um, and that's, and that's, that's how we manage that situation.
Okay, um, thank you. So I think we.
Also, sorry.
Please go ahead.
It's important to say that the, the noise ear, the noise ear system, which is a traffic light noise system, is in public view. So it's behind the boards of bars. So all, all of the locality of where we want to put it is behind the bar. So that all of our staff can recognise it and see it in their eye line, but also customers, Android servers, anything from the licensing community will be able to sit to. So if we are breaking those rules, if it is red and if it is, you know, we are going above and beyond our noise, uh, remit, then we are, we have to protect our license and therefore it has to, we have to stay within that. And again, the reason, I just wanted to, I just wanted to make the point again that in order to make this an economically viable success, we're going to have to open a door if it's thirty degrees outside.
Okay, uh, thank you. I think it's probably, um, probably a good opportunity now to, to run through the, some of the details that David Lowens wanted to confirm with you. Um, just before we do that, going back to the, the document six point two point four. Um, my interpretation of that, I know you've, you've suggested, and it says here that it's, it's based on all ten people talking with raised voices simultaneously. My interpretation of that is, is that it is based on ten people outside. Um, there are ten, uh, ten marks on the, uh, on, on the sheet. Um, so just, just for clarity, my interpretation is based on ten people outside, not twenty. Would that be a correct assumption, David, do you think, given the, the information that we've got? So there are ten points there. There's another point there. So the.
Uh, the councillor's pointed out ten persons as mentioned in the report chair. You'll also take into account the transmissed evidence by Mr Carey that the individual may not have been so focused on his report and maybe meaning ten persons speaking and ten listening.
And the actual report uses the phrase, assuming that all ten people are talking. So it says that there are ten people talking. In common sense to a dictator, there must be more than ten people outside when it's all ten talking to themselves.
And the legal advice is gets a little bit on the boundary of this particular variation versus the premises license itself and the use.
Okay, uh, thank you. Still, my interpretation of that is that it's based on ten people outside. And if all ten are talking, where, where are the others? So it, it, for me, it's ten. Okay. David, if you'd like to run through some of the details, please.
So at this stage, I'd ask the applicant to say what the offered conditions are, please, if any. And the noise management plan is probably a good start.
They'll be based on the noise management plan. The first condition.
Um, yeah, so we've raised that the outdoor seating area will not be permitted to be used after eleven o'clock. Such like, as, as like the half past ten, um, such like the limits that is that we have on the brewery tap, for example.
Okay, can you describe why this area would be different back half an hour to the other area?
Due to the size of it, I believe. Um, the front garden of the brewery tap is sizable, it holds a number of people. Um, whereas this area is smaller by far. And I think, I think that half an hour window is acceptable, especially considering the other parts of the area are allowed to see people outside up until eleven P M.
Okay, thank you.
And obviously the idea is there, the way to manage the situation is go out twenty minutes before, tell them that they've got twenty minutes. And if there's not enough room in the pub for them after that time, then they will have to leave. And then everybody, there will be somebody stood outside waving them in or waving them off at premises.
What's written down is the outdoor seating area will not be used after twenty three hundred hours.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Then a couple of, I'm looking at the noise management plan. There's, the area will be roped cordoned off after this time. Is that offered?
Yes, it is.
Uh, David, the applicant also mentioned, uh, how they would manage the, the area by um, asking people to, to drink up at twenty minutes before. Um, is that something you'd like to have in your conditions as well? Is that a suitable condition? Is that enforceable?
Um, several stages, Chair. First, is it offered by the applicant? If it is, I'll need wording. And if it isn't, then towards the end of this committee, you'll need to consider whether you wish to impose it and if so, what wording is used. But the first point is, is it, is it offered in the first place?
I think it's imperative that we do say to people twenty minutes before, you've got twenty minutes left in this area. So absolutely, it's offered. In terms of wording, how we put that to people, I can be helpful to you.
Customers to be advised.
Customers in the outside, in the outdoor seating area. If you're going to do outdoor area in three, would you like me to do outdoor area in one rather than outdoor seating area? Outdoor area. So I'll do the same at two. So one, the outdoor area will not be used after twenty three hundred hours. Two, the outdoor area will be roped off. That's twenty three hundred hours to prevent use by the public. I don't want to stop anybody collecting beer glasses. Three, customers in the outdoor area will be advised of closure at twenty three hundred.
Can I just say, if we have to do that, I'd stop anyone coming inside with a cigarette?
And we'll, I think we'll, we'll come to that separately.
We'll be.
If you're going to shut the area off completely.
Yep. So what I'd suggest is, I'll get rid of number three, councillor, I'll come straight back to you. Number three, customers in the outdoor area will be advised of closure at twenty three hundred at least. Twenty minutes prior to that time. On the question of smoking, we've said the outdoor area will not be used. That will include smoking. On the other hand, you're right next door to the public highway and the, the footway. So logically, anybody wanting a cigarette can go past the outdoor area, onto the footway and have their smoke there.
You can make it worse, I'd rather leave the.
If you want me to amend number one regarding, amend, it's offered at this point rather than imposed. But if you were looking for a change to be used for smoking only.
Shall we, shall we ask the applicant how you'd like to deal with people smoking after eleven o'clock?
Could do, Chair. I'd just flag that if you have the area used, it makes a bit of a nonsense of the noise management plan.
I might as well agree if we do break that area off, people are going to, unless we break that area off, place that area in people, the general public works in there. And if they're going to smoke, then they're going to make as much noise as people drinking. I think it's good that they, I think when we ask them if they do want a cigarette, then they do it away from our side after that specific time. I mean, to be honest with you, on most given days, we won't be offering anybody drinks after that time anyway. Um, because, you know, we only open until, we, we're only to serve until eleven P M, Monday to Thursday and half past ten on Sundays.
Or on New Year's Eve.
On New Year's Eve, of course.
Yeah, within the year's Eve, so. Um, yeah, but people still do thoughts over the eleven on New Year's Eve because they can.
Typically, we're finding smoking at a less, of an area. It's still a less of an issue. It's still an issue. We understand that. But so.
So people could buy a takeaway plant, go in after a cigarette with it and drink and smoke on the pay. The, the licensee is not responsible for anything like that. It was on the Queen's honeymoon, but it can happen.
But they can, they can follow what it says, which means.
We're going to end up, we're going to go on.
I think on that point, the takeaways that we, we, we would like to offer, all, all takeaways with sealed vessels, we use a.
You've got an obligation for a sealed vessel, yes, that's on there.
We, we would not, and the types of beer that we would sell.
It's not a loose pint, plastic.
No, 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 and glasses won't be offered, plastic cups won't be offered. We don't offer that. Our intention is for you to, for you to go away, not on the streets, enjoy the products that you buy.
Okay, thank, thank you. So regarding smoking on the street, um, you will presumably prevent people from taking their, their glasses out with them onto the street.
Absolutely, for two, for two, for two reasons, for two reasons, for two reasons really. One is a danger to, to the public. You know, glass outside of my area, we can't control, we don't want that dropped. We don't want people walking around the area. We don't want smashed anything. And also, we're not allowed. So in order to police that, no, no glassware to be taken outside after eleven P M.
Okay, so how will you ensure that the public are aware of that?
Um, currently signage and or, you know, all of our staff are fully well trained. And as soon as it does come to closing down and last orders and the like, and managing those groups of people, um, they will be told. And we also, we always, especially on people, especially on busy nights, have somebody, that extra person floating around to make sure that the people are managed on their exit.
Okay, thank you. David, apologies.
No worries, Chair. I like the chaos of licensing committees.
Coming quiver. This is my best work, you know, this is.
Um, signage, not exact words, but I think you, certainly the report has mentioned signage.
Yeah.
So signage suggested regarding times of use of the outside area, regarding no glasses off site and regarding care for neighbours when leaving.
And noise, noise sign behind the bar so everyone can see.
Oh, sorry, councillor, we're, we're at the stage of offered by.
Is that, is that in the report?
Are you talking about the sound system? And that, I mean, that's the location that we would, we would offer to put it. So that both staff and
Public.
Yeah, could say that.
Okay, so the, the, the device that you've described, the, the traffic light system, that's something that you're, um, you're, you're imposing and you're therefore offering as a condition as well?
Yes, we are. It's in, I know we can't talk about planning, but it's within our planning provision.
You can offer it as part of this licensing application if you do. Right, lovely. So how are we going to describe that introduction of a.
Um, it's, it's a noise traffic light system as far as I'm, as far as what the applicants are operating, a noise traffic light system.
Behind, showing behind the bar.
Visible to the public.
And visible.
I guess it would be a warning system.
To the public. Noise traffic light system, shown behind the bar, invisible to the public, showing a level of noise. Showing level of noise should do the job. I don't see there's a, it's designed to do anything else, no.
Okay, thank you.
Regarding para two of the noise management plan, there's reference to a hours of use. We've done the hours of use. There's also reference at the bottom to, on the basis of the proposed one point eight metre high close border timber fences installed on the inside, et cetera.
Um, we offered that in, in order to protect our neighbours at one five two. Um, they've, I've met them a couple of times and we just want to screen them from any visible and or if we do have a closed fence on that particular side of that garden, then it will help any noise.
So we offer that as a condition.
Yeah. Yeah, I could do that, yeah. So, um, on that, is there a risk that we are, could get into conflict with planning on that?
No, there isn't, councillor, because they're two separate, uh, systems. I wish they weren't, it would be very sensible to have one committee.
My main reason, planning objected to such a fence, would we lose a, a risk of that?
There's a risk of that, and what would happen is that therefore they'd be, um, planning would say, no, you can't comply with your licensing act premises licence. So the applicant would have to come back to this committee to amend their licensing act premises licence for the very obvious grounds that the planning have just said you can't do it.
Uh, I mean, it is also possible that planning could impose any other restrictions that, um, uh, that may or may not be allowed in this licence, uh, if the committee is minded to grant it.
That's ridiculous. Oh, well, we qualify the event, the, uh, the fence as one-point-high metre of such other fence as approved by planning. That, and it takes a bit away from you.
It depends on what you're offering to the moment. The noise report's quite clear on height and how and all the rest of it. And if we say whatever planning, uh, produced, then we might not end up with where we want to be.
A predicament.
Yes. So, I mean, at the moment, you're offering, so I'll rewrite this compared to whatever you're offering.
Well, I think I'll offer that.
Offer it as in, uh, the wording on the noise management plan?
Such other fence as shall be...
Right.
Okay, as, as I've described...
I think I need to offer that.
The planning, planning, um, system, um, is separate to licensing, but it, it will be, because there was no planning, change of use, um, for all of this, um, it will be considering the whole application, whereas we're just considering variation here.
Yeah. And the last, I think it's the last suggestion from myself as to whether it's offered or not, is the complaints procedure. We've mentioned, actually, yes, signage, six will do nicely, signage, but complaints procedure, seven-one and seven-two, effectively worse to that, uh, effect, are they offered? Thank you. So just to assist everybody, offered conditions at this time, the outdoor seating, the outdoor area will not be used after twenty-three hundred hours. Two, the outdoor area will be roped off at twenty-three hundred hours to prevent use by the public. Three, customers in the outdoor area will be advised of closure at twenty-three hundred hours, at least twenty minutes prior to that time. Four, signage, precise words, not specified, but signage to cover times of the use of the outside area, no glasses off-site, and having regard for care for your neighbours when leaving the premises. Five, introduction of the noise traffic light system, showing behind the bar, invisible to the public, showing the level of noise. Six, a one-point-eight-metre-high close-boarded timber fence, et cetera, as per the noise report, or such other fence as is approved under the planning system. Seven, and last, complaints procedure to take account of seven-point-one, seven-point-two of the noise report.
How will people, how will people leave from a small move from?
If there's a pathway out, it'll be roped off to the side.
Okay.
That'd be as much, yes, I'd hope so. Otherwise, you're going to have health and safety, immediate obstruction that will require removal. Um, I think the noise limit is already in the, uh, conditions.
Yes. Yeah, the noise limiting device would be that, uh, sound ear system, the traffic light system.
I mean, to be honest, it's, uh, your noise limit is off the point of this variation anyway.
Yes.
Okay, um, right, okay, so we need to just stick to one conversation at a time, uh, please. So we, we've just, just discussed, uh, where the rope will be. Um, can you just confirm that that will be, um, to the, to the side where the, uh, where the wall, um, leads up along the path?
Yes, so the idea is one-point-eight-metre fence along that side, buffering one by two, uh, one by two A, followers, and then on the front, a low picket fence, one to that here, all the way around. And then, as it goes all the way around, there is a ramp going up towards the front door, followers, and the rope will be, um, you can see this, but the rope will be, we've closed, pushing across here, so it'll rope off that entire area, but leaving further access completely clear. And also, um, the door will now reach this way. The gate will be put here, um, and again, tied back to the wall, uh, so that we don't get involved in obstructions in case there is a fire, or there's a fire, or, or there's an emergency. And I think it's important to add that this gate here and the picket fence going up around these walls, um, will hopefully appease our neighbours slightly. In fact, during all closed times, nobody will be able to sit anywhere near that courtyard or on that courtyard, because otherwise they have to jump a fence that is too high for them. Um, and this should stop any noise, um, complaints from coming to us in the wee hours of the morning that we can't control by people that own our customers and or when we're closed.
Okay, thank you. The, um, so will the picket fence be, uh, on the outside wall where it joins with Omni Street?
Uh, on top of.
Yeah. Okay, so people won't be able to sit on that wall?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, I've made a slight tweak, and I hope I'm right. And two, the outdoor area will be roped off at the ramp at twenty-three hundred hours, does that make sense?
To me.
Yep, lovely.
Okay, is there, are there any other conditions?
Well, it depends how you read it. The ramp could be the start of the ramp at the bottom, or the entrance to the courtyard itself at the top.
Yeah, we know, we know what we mean.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Catch your tears.
Yeah, well, just don't upset anybody off the fact, you know.
Okay. Um, are there any other conditions relating to noise that you would like to, uh, offer to the committee at this stage? Okay, so the noise management report, there's a lot of detail in there, but, um, we, we've had a, an opportunity to, to fish out the, uh, the relevant parts. Um, uh, Mr, um, D'Amico, um, is there anything else you'd like to ask the applicant, uh, or any, uh, further requests that you would like for conditions? I know that you've, you've reiterated your view that the, um, numbers should remain restricted to thirty. Um, are, are there any other concerns that you have, um, related to the noise, um, especially of those outside?
Um, that's pretty much it, because I believe the cooler's not part of this meeting, can I see it? That's the one I would be interested in. And, um, beyond that, I think, just a second, I have...
Okay. So, um, you, you suggest, um, that you'd be interested in the, uh, in the, the noise from the, uh, the fan in particular?
Yeah.
Uh, does that mean that the, for you, the noise from customers until eleven o'clock is, is, is a less of a concern to you?
I know, but, but, just I don't think there's much I can do, I mean, I, I'm against them.
Just use your mic, sorry.
Fundamentally, I don't want that to be. So it's going to happen anyway, it seems to me. And, um, whether, I'm just kind of due, it's just something I can do.
We, what we...
I don't limit the number of people.
Yeah, okay, that's noted by the committee. Uh, just, just for clarity here, we, uh, the conditions that, uh, have been offered by the, um, uh, the applicant, um, is a detail that we, we have to go through, um, as part of this process, so that, so that the committee has, um, a, a set of, uh, conditions and a, and a whole application to, to consider. So nothing has been necessarily determined yet. It's also, uh, important to remember that this is a variation of a, a licence. So even if we didn't grant the, um, variations that have been requested, there's still a licence in place for this. So, so, um, uh, assuming planning permission is, is permitted, uh, they could still operate under the same, um, uh, same, uh, licences as all of us. Uh, so in terms of, of stopping the, um, the premises from being open, that's not with it, that's not something that we can do in this committee today.
I understand.
Um, only planning can do that. Um, so, um, uh, so we're considering the variations of this licence rather than the licence in, in the whole. Okay, thank you.
Can I just make a quick point on the numbers? We've gone away and we've looked very, very hard at this building. And there are reasons beforehand, we believe, why it wasn't a commercial success. We have crunched as many numbers as we can using all the data that we've got at our disposal, having run other buildings before, we've looked at what it might cost us in terms of business rates, eventually, um, rent, um, electricity, and all of that. Our intention is to improve the area and make it look and make it feel like a community, a little hub. The reason that we, we don't see it being economically viable if the numbers stay the same. We know that we're not, we, our intention isn't to run that place for sixty people on any given day at all time. Our intention is to have a, um, have an economically viable building that we can run a business from. And that's why that amount is there. We don't want to, and we want to work increasingly with you, the R S C board, and our neighbours, especially if they're adjacent and or opposite, and also make sure that we can do that fully, both run a business and be accepted into the community. So, uh, in terms of those, that, that thirty people number, it's, it's important for us that, you know, office staff.
Okay, um, thank you. Um, we've had, um, uh, during the discussions, um, it was mentioned that you would have a phone number available. Is that something that, uh, you're offering as a, as a condition as well?
They are, Chair, it's part of seven-point-one and therefore will be transferred across.
The number will change, obviously.
Yep.
Thank you. Um, okay, and, uh, in relation to that, I would always, um, uh, recommend to members of the public, uh, if there is a noise disturbance at any venue, to contact the council and not just the, uh, the venue themselves. Um, okay, thank you. Uh, are there any more questions for...
I've just got one, I mean, if there was trouble there, I don't know if there was trouble there. Would you call the police straight away if I saw anything to sell, or how would you manage it?
Well, we have to be, there are all sorts of different things that may arise in, 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 uh, in that sort of scene. Remember, this is a micro pub. The numbers will be used, there won't be the numbers there that we're used to in any of our other venues. But because of the training we give all of our staff, we encourage, especially if they are full-time and all managers, we want them to be well-trained in, um, negotiation and conflict resolution. And also, they want to be mindful of themselves as well. So the first thing's first is, if there is any sort of trouble, you have a word, you want that person to leave. If that person does not leave, the second step is, call the police immediately, because then they're trespassing, or they're doing harm to the people around them, your business, and your staff. So yes, we ask them to leave first, we ask them to calmly leave first. We are, we've obviously, i- immediately stop observing anybody of that person or related to that person, and then we ask them to leave.
I guarantee all the first aid equipment.
Yes.
In there, anyway.
It, well, it, it, yeah, we, um, in terms of health and safety, we have to have a first aider on, or we'd like to have a first aider on site within, within any given team. And, um, yes, we will have all the necessary, um, at our disposal, should anything go wrong.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, um, Mr D'Amico, is there anything else you'd like to...
Chair, um, just to flag, before you get on to finals, I don't think you get invited expressly, the applicant, to, um, have, have any questions to the objection.
I haven't, no, do you have any questions that you, okay, right, okay. Um, are you, um, further reassured by anything that you heard today, or, or are you...
I'll judge when the decision...
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'd swear, I see it.
Okay.
I can't be very generous today, I'm not even an expert, it's my first commitment, so.
I think, um, I think the, um, but the committee has noted your, your objection. Um, and I think we, we're, we're clear on what it is you're, you're objecting to. Okay, um, okay, so in that case, I'll give the applicant or the applicant solicitor one, one last chance to address the committee briefly, if you would please, because we have been here for quite a long time.
I'll be remarkably brief. Going back to what you said at the beginning, um, we would say it's a relatively simple stretch, or an application based on the existing licence, what the applicant is seeking is not unreasonable, it's supported by professional competent evidence. And you've heard Mr White persuasively say the importance of being allowed to have the number of potential, uh, customers that he needs. He wants to make this a viable, well-run, decent business of benefit to, to the community. And I'd urge you to, to take full note of that, there's no risk to any of the licensing objectives. It will be a well-run, properly managed establishment. And as I say, if the neighbours do run into any problems, they have access to all the services that the council provides. And Mr White will point himself back for this committee.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, so David, is there anything else that you'd like to add or ask?
No, Chair, thank you, nothing to ask as to, um, what to say, um, just to flag what you know already, that the behaviour of members of the public when outside the control of the premises licence holder under the statutory guidance is not to be held against the premises licence holder, he can only do what he can do in the area controlled by them.
Okay, uh, thank you. So I think we'll take, um, we'll take a, uh, I think probably we'd better have half an hour. Um, so if everyone comes back at twenty to one, uh, sorry, ten to one. Um, and then, uh, we'll, um, have a determination for you there, so we've got an opportunity for a comfort break and a, and a discussion. So not, not, not before, uh, ten to one, please.